Board of Education to order, roll call please.
Member Baxley?
Here.
Member Langendorf here, member Hassanaka, member Vice President Exon.
Here.
And President Palowski.
Here. Is this, sorry, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda as published?
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, are there any citizens here present willing to make a, wishing to make a statement for the board tonight? Hearing none. I'd like to move on to tonight's pro forma to thank the League of Women Voters for agreeing to allow the citizens of Urbana to pose questions. The four individuals wishing to represent Sub District Four. So we'll exchange seats with the candidates and we'll kick off the forum.
Do you want us in the order that we, okay.
Get Lisa, Lola, Paul, and then you.
Okay.
I'll slip behind you if I can, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
The microphone, it's always the mic. Yeah. So I'd like to welcome everybody to the, this candidate interview. The candidates are, I am Tricia Crowley, President of the Champaign County League of Women Voters, and we're pretty much using the usual league rules for a forum for how we're going to do this. And these are candidates for vacancy on the Urbana Board of Education, and the Urbana Board will select a mem- a member, a new member from these four candidates. So the way we do it is we have two minutes each for opening statements, and then one minute each for each question, and then two minutes for a closing statement. So Lisa Diaz, do you want to start with a two-minute opening statement?
Thank you, Tricia. Good evening. My name is Lisa Diaz. My family and I have lived in Urbana for the past seventeen years. Our children have attended Lille, and our youngest continues to be part of the dual-language program in high school. In the meantime, we are or have been banned theater, soccer, Girl Scouts, and 4-H family. I volunteered in classrooms and in PTAs at the elementary, middle, and high school. So why am I applying for this seat? The first answer is that I care about our community, our families, and our youth. I currently serve as the Director of the University of Illinois Outreach Youth Program called 4-H, and in that role, I have to think about the needs of youth across the entire state. And so I have some experience in thinking beyond immediate local needs. I've served on state-level committees with the Illinois State Board of Education, and have had an appointment in the College of Education at the U of I for all of my years here. My hope in applying for this seat is to have an opportunity to serve in a way that more directly contributes to the unique needs and opportunities for Urbana youth. My second motivation is around the unique moment in time I believe we face. Over the years, I've seen our district successfully innovate to respond to emerging issues, others that are still a work in progress. We face some critical decisions around possible redefinition of catchment areas, mental health needs in our schools, recruitment and retention of effective teachers, the future of dual-language, and closing achievement gaps in our district. They are all important, and it will take a strong team to decide and carry out our best efforts. Teacher education and support have been a central part of my life's work and an area that I think is essential to the academic and social success of our youth. My experience has taught me that no change will please everyone, but I believe in a data-driven process that brings together research, locally anchored data, and voices of Urbana stakeholders. And I'm especially motivated to foster deliberative processes that are transparent, accessible, and representative for our community.
All right, Ms. Jones, opening statement, two minutes.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Lola Jones, and I will be answering why I'm interested in serving at the School Board Member District Four. As a daughter of a thirty-year-plus Urbana Adult Education School Staff Member, as well as a proud member of Urbana High School graduate, it has been my pleasure to live and serve in the area of Sub District Four for more than three decades. In addition, I am also an invested mother of two Urbana High School alums, as well as actively involved in the education of my grandchildren who recently graduated from Urbana High School. One as the highest high jumper in the state of Illinois, and the other who performed a vocal solo with UHS a cappello in Carnegie Hall in New York City. I believe my dad's thirty-year career within a bu- with Urbana Adult Education, my mom's leadership in bringing Head Start to Champaign County, and our family's legacy in Urbana School District across four decades enables me to help students of all backgrounds and abilities, to reach their abilities to their full potential. My advocating for equitable resources and closing learning gaps. Driven to increase student and family engagement among historically marginalized families, I am dedicated to continuing my family's involvement, commitment to public education. As a re- as a result, I have built a strong network of Urbana students and families who trust me to represent their educational needs. I actually have, by choice, been a school bus driver for the last six years for Champaign and Urbana. Four for Champaign and two for Urbana. And that was by choice, not by force.
Thank you. Mr. Myers, two minutes opening.
So hello, my name is Paul Myers. I've spent the past eleven years in Urbana, Illinois, and I've greatly enjoyed becoming a part of this community. I moved down here to, from the Chicago College suburbs to afford my education, but in tow, I brought with me two young kids. And those kids got world-class education while attending Urbana schools. As far as it goes with why I want to serve on the Board of Education, well, first and foremost, I want to serve my community. And I want to give voice in this, in these times, I guess, that we're having in the Board of Education. Hopefully, while this process here isn't necessarily democratic, I think that we are, we serve democratically to make sure that we give voice to those who aren't necessarily being heard, or those who aren't speaking loudly. So we, to be heard, to make sure that others are heard. As far as it goes with what I feel makes me qualified to do so, well, this past year started with me teaching at Dr. Williams, and it was an honor and a pleasure to serve in that building, those students, with the great staff that was there. Unfortunately, but I guess fortunately, at the same time, I received a role that fit with the PhD training, PhD training that I got at the University of Illinois. And so now I'm working with a small organization that provides technical assistance, coaching, and training to schools across the nation, but particularly on the West Coast. Urbana's home, and so I want to, that, that skillset that I've developed, I want to make sure is that used at home. And to be able to, again, provide for all kids, for all constituents, for this community. So, thank you.
And Ms. Yazidi?
Yazidi.
Yazidi?
Yes.
Sorry?
No, it's okay. I know it's, it's not easy.
So, two minutes, opening statement.
Okay. First, I would just like to thank everybody here that's here. I thank you to the board members and the administration. I know this is not easy on many fronts, so I appreciate you, everybody. We're all here for the same desire to serve our community in some way. My name is Mabruka Yazidi. I'm a parent at Wiley Elementary. I have discussed the opportunity of this appointment over the last few months with administration, former board members, current board members, to understand the time and dedication required for this position. I strongly believe in equitable public education for all Urbana students. Although my background is not in K through twelve education, I do bring a wealth of experience that uniquely qualifies me for this position. As a nurse navigator at the Carl Breast Cancer Center, co-chair and co-founder of the NAPDC Outreach Committee at the Mills, the advocacy chair of the Wiley PTA, and the leader of the Urbana Girl Scout Troop Number Twenty Seventeen, probably my hardest job, by the way, I regularly work with individuals from diverse backgrounds. Through these roles, I have gained a deep understanding of the challenges faced throughout our commi- community. Urbana is a town brimming with highly educated, some might say overly opinionated, but great community-involved individuals. I believe my main responsibility as a school board member would be to listen carefully and responsibly to our community, analyze information provided by the district, and make fair, rational, and data-driven decisions. Open communication and transparency will ensure that all stakeholders and residents feel valued and included in USD one sixteen's most important decisions. My primary objective and hope as a board member is to help reduce or eliminate the communication gaps between the board, the school district, and our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the, so the questions will go, starting with Ms. Diaz for the first question, and then after that, each person down the line will be the starting answerer. So Ms. Diaz, first question, and some of this you may have covered in your opening statement, but it's kind of an introductory question. Can you tell us approximately how many years you lived in Urbana, and if you have children currently, or had children in the Urbana School District?
We've lived here for seventeen years and have had children in the school district attending Lille, a part of the dual-language program, as well as before there was a dual-language program. And our youngest is currently at the high school, just finished his freshman year.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Jones, I can repeat the question for anybody.
Same question, how long have I lived here, and do I have any kids currently? As a matter of fact, I don't ever remember a time I didn't have anybody going to Urbana. I've been here since I was six months old, and out of five other siblings, I was the only one not born in Champaign-Urbana. But our roots are here. My dad, as I said, had worked for adult education for the last thirty-three years. My mom brought Head Start to Champaign County, well, she fought, helped fight to bring Head Start because she had twins living in homes. And she had a little one under that, so she needed to have somewhere for them to go, and it's been successful, you know. But as far as kids, both kids are graduated from the Urbana High. And I have grandchildren that are now attending several different schools at the Urbana School District.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Myers?
Okay, so I've been here for eleven years. I guess probably the, the youngest as far as it goes with tenure of the group. And I had two little ones who attended Thomas Paine and the Middle School.
Okay, and Ms. Yazidi?
I've been here for four years. My father immigrated from Tunisia, so I don't have like, I have, I don't have a family that's been in America for thirty years plus. But my husband's family is from this area. My late brother-in-law was Senator Scott Bennett. We have purchased the house here. I am very, very dedicated to Urbana. I love it here. I want to stay here, and I plan to raise my daughter here.
Thank you. One daughter?
One daughter.
Okay. And for the second question, we'll start with Ms. Jones. What types of, what other types of public service have you been involved in?
Starting with working for the University of Illinois. I was there in, in payroll for a couple of years. I've also worked for Department of Human Services seventeen years. I've worked for Family Services, Meals on Wheels, AT&T, public service all day long. And with the school district.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
So I don't know if we consider teaching public service, but I've been a teacher.
I think you better, if you're here.
I've been a teacher here in the district and in the college Chicago land suburbs for nine years at this point. Well, nine years in total. I've served on, as a reader for the Young Playwrights Festival and for the, I believe it's the screen to, or a scene to screen or script to screen competition that was held here, I believe as of twenty fourteen, fifteen. And I've served in my, as a collegiate, I guess, as a collegiate in my fraternity and the Black Student Union.
Thank you. Ms. Yazidi?
I guess we could say healthcare is a sort of public service, which I have done a lot of that in many various roles for fifteen years at least. Girl scout leader, as I said before. I have volunteered with my medical license to help take people with various disabilities on vacation. That's probably my main.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Diaz?
So my service has included serving, volunteering with the PTAs at our kid's school at Lille, the middle school and, and the high school. I mentioned I have had some opportunities to collaborate on Illinois State Board of Education Committees. Most recently, on an equity committee, which is really close and dear to my heart, both in the K-12 space as well as after-school. I am a member of a statewide network that collaborates around uplifting the quality of after-school care that's provided to young people. My husband is very, very active in the immigration reform space, and I'm second wheel, all family in, all hands on deck on many of those things, including the New American Welcome Center.
Okay, thank you. So for the next question, we'll start with Mr. Myers. If you had to say there was the one reason why you want, want to be a school board member, what would that reason be?
I believe that I'm uniquely qualified to help close some of those coherent, coherence and communication issues that the board has been, has had recently with the community. Working at, and again, small organization, Marzona Research, I've engaged in offering technical assistance, coaching, and training to organizations. Most recently, I was in Denver, where a similar issue between the public school board and the community reached, had occurred because of school closures. I think that there's something to be learned with what education, research, and, and database decision-making has to offer. I think that I'm positioned and well capable to offer that assistance with the, with the board, with my work on the board.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Yazidi?
I think I am qualified because my normal day-to-day job is communication. I am, on a daily basis, having extremely difficult conversations with people. I'm coordinating with many different people, actively listening. I mean, that, that's my whole job. And I, I refer to it as sort of a cat herder, but people come to me, and I listen, and I can make decisions based on what everybody's saying. So while I don't have a, a background, once again, in education, I do have a skillset for communication, and I feel like I would be a great asset on this board for that reason.
Ms. Diaz, I can repeat the question at any time, anybody.
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah. What is, if you had to have one rea- say, one reason for wanting to be a school board member, what would that reason be?
Yeah, so I will say, my job does not keep me, I'm busy. So it wasn't because I wanted more meetings in my life. It's because I live in this community, I care about this community. And when I saw the vacancy, I think for this district in particular, representation is so, so important, and active participation and voice to a district that doesn't have its own neighborhood school that is cut up into attending different schools, and that diversity of perspectives is so, so important. And while I have a background in education, my interest in what I think I would bring to the table, my interest is being accessible, building trust, the active listening, and really try to be a voice that amplifies the diverse needs of our community.
Thank you. And Ms. Jones?
If appointed to this position, I would do my homework and listen to families, students, and staff. Since we're approaching the time for the next strategic plan, I would support the planning process and advocate for innovative ways to engage with families and students in Sub District Four. I talked to a lot of parents, even when I was on the school bus, and just tried to get a feel of what they thought, you know, what was missing, what, what they needed. I've always wanted to bring community together because I just don't think we have enough parent involvement. And I think that's very, very important, and I have had the opportunity to see how important that is because parents are, they're, they're wanting to engage. I just think they just don't know how.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Yazidi, what is your vision for the district, and how does it support the district's mission statement?
My vision for the district is a highly community-involved guided district. So a strategic planning committee that involves a lot of the community members that are very vocal, let's put them to work, to help us make decisions.
Ms. Diaz?
So when we moved here seventeen years ago, the neighborhood school model of Urbana was a big part of our choosing to live here. And I have benefited from that. I have seen the, the power and the history of that. I've also seen that there are many, many youth and families in Urbana who don't have access to that ideal, who are bused and not within walking distance of a neighborhood school. So it's an ideal, how we close that gap in a way that feels truer to mission for all of our families is something that I think is important for our district to continue thinking about. And then equity. I, we struggle with the same achievement gaps in our district, and there are many innovative successes that have happened and still work to be done in succeeding and closing those gaps.
Thank you. And Ms. Jones, and I'll just repeat the question. What is your vision for the district, and how does it support the district's mission statement?
I think what I would like to see more of is what I grew up with when I attended Urbana schools. And that was from Washington School all the way to the Urbana High School. And it's changed a lot, but I just think that my parents were very involved, and I think parent involvement is key. I would like to see it, that tiger pride come back because I think, I don't see it like we had it when we were, when we were going to school, and it, I think it's very important for the entire community to have that tiger pride come back.
Thank you. Mr. Myers?
I, my vision for the school district would be that it is extremely exceptional in meeting the needs of all students. And I think that that's sort of the last line of the, the vision statement for the school district. I think in order to do so, what everyone else has said here is true, that we have to engage the community, that we have to work with our teachers, that we have to engage in a different way, that we need to make decisions that are driven on, that are driven on data or with data, and that we make sure that we engage with the community and, and make sure that those that aren't speaking to us, we find out why. And we hopefully can provide for, again, this, this region that doesn't have schools in it, but we want to make sure that we're responsive to everyone in Urbana who is served by Urbana schools.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz? What can board members contribute to creating a positive relationship with the administration and the Urbana Adult Education?
I think a key role, the district office is very, very busy doing the important work of, of running our programs and overseeing that vision. I think the board can be an important collaborator in bringing voices to the table that can inform the conversation and to engage in the dialogue that, that weighs outcomes that are going to benefit our young people.
Thank you. And Ms. Jones, what can board members contribute to creating a positive relationship between the administration and the Urbana Adult Education?
Well, um, of course, I'm going back to what I saw coming up when my dad worked for the district. He actually was in charge of bringing parents and students to school. We had actually a daycare center when we were over at Brookings Building, which worked out very well for parents. There were grandmas. I have an aunt that graduated at eighty-seven years old from the Adult Education Center. So everybody was involved and engaged, and I, it was very community-based. And I think having that particular, because there are barriers that people have, but having, meeting people where they are, I think is very important because everybody is not on the same page. And I think I saw a lot of that with my dad.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Myers, do you want me to repeat the question?
Please do, yes.
What can board members contribute to creating a positive relationship between the administration and the Urbana Education Association?
By talking, by communicating. I think that we can make sure that we facilitate a good relationship between the board and, and the teachers by making sure that we're engaging in those conversations. And by working, not, not working in, in any ways in, in opposition to either group, but trying to, trying to make sure that we're listening. By being at schools, by, like Ms. Jones pointed out, by starting the conversation, by engaging in the conversation and listening, taking what we, what we learn, and hopefully, not going to say like broker or piece, I don't think that we're, they're at loggerheads or anything, but to sort of make sure that we are agents for an effective relationship.
Do you want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
It's a long question. What, what can board members contribute to creating a positive relationship with the administration and the Urbana Education Association?
Communication, and I would really say it as feet on the ground. And this would go not just for the Urbana Education Association, but really, board members making themselves available for the parties that need to be heard, whether it be parents or faculty. I plan to actually have office hours if I'm appointed at the free library, so that they, at the children's library, so parents can come if they have kids, at least once every other weekend, so somebody can talk to you face to face, whether that be a teacher, whether... whether that be a teacher, whether that be a parent, whether that be anybody. But being available for communication is really important.
Thank you. And Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Describe what you believe to be the role of the teachers' union.
Teachers' union? Actually, I believe the teachers' union's role is, would be between the administration and the faculty. I think that that's a very important role, actually. I used to be a union, in charge of a union myself. And I think when there are issues that arise, they need to be addressed. I don't think anything needs to be just covered over just until the next time. I think everything that actually is brought up needs to be addressed until there is a decision made one way or another. And everybody should feel like they've been heard. I think that's very important. Because if one side doesn't feel heard, then I don't think the issue's been resolved.
So Mr. Myers? What do you believe to be the role of the teachers' union?
I think the role of a teachers' union is to protect and serve the interests of teachers and to be an honest broker in issues with administration. To sort of echo what Ms. Jones was saying, you know, that when, if those two, if the administration and teachers are at odds with one another, then it's the role of the, again, the role of the union and to the administration to have that honest conversation with each other. And hopefully, a school board can help serve to, as a submit between those two.
Ms. Yacidi?
The role of the teachers' union, in my opinion, is to protect the teachers, advocate for them when they feel they aren't being heard. It's really important. I wish, I was in a nurse's union, so I fully support the teachers' union. And as far as being a board member in the teachers' union, just, I guess, I don't know if we're technically a mediator, but just facilitating a relationship between the district and the union representatives.
And Ms. Diaz?
I think many of the things that have already been stated, the union's role is to give voice. Maybe one thing that hasn't been touched on that I've seen be a power in unions is taking individual needs and experiences and pooling those together in an organized, strategic way to try to identify some commonalities that can be rallied around. What is that thing that connects and unifies? And then lift that up, amplify that. And to, I think the board plays an important role in bridging and connecting that with administration.
Mr. Myers? What is, what do you think is the greatest strength of the Urbana School District?
I think our greatest strength is our diversity. And that is the diversity of experiences, as well as the diversity of the peoples who have that experience. We live in an area where we are fortunate to be near a major research university. And so we're served by parents and community members and teachers who've experienced the university or work for that university at present. We also have a culturally rich, culturally rich environment. And that is an amazing place to raise a child, to school a child. So that diversity is our greatest strength.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Yacidi? What do you think is the greatest strength of the Urbana School District?
Well, I was also going to say student diversity. I will also say teacher diversity, even administrative diversity. I read somewhere, because I've been going through back past meetings, that there's fifty-three percent administrators are people of color, if I'm correct in that stat. I don't know. I read it somewhere in one of the back meetings. But the diversity of the students, the teachers, the staff, all around. And I hope that just continues to increase. Urbana is a wonderful, magical place, in my opinion. There's a reason why we chose to live here and not next door. And so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Diaz?
So I was gonna, everyone's on the same thing. My very first words were our diversity. And I believe that so strongly. And again, that's part of why we picked Urbana. And in my seventeen years here, I've seen that continue to evolve and grow. And I think that gives us opportunity and prompting to continue asking the hard questions about how we make Urbana live up to its ideal of being a place where all youth succeed, feel that they belong and are nurtured by the adults in their community. I think another asset of Urbana is just that we're small enough to have unique opportunities to really do some rich collaboration and connecting even across our elementary schools and families and our different organizations, and really elevate and make visible the excellence of our young people.
And Ms. Jones? What do you think is the greatest strength of the Urbana School District?
Well, I would have to say definitely what everybody else is saying, diversity. And that's to include fifty-four-plus languages, cultural of innovation, flexibility, size of district allows it to adapt more easily than most. I grew up in a ninety-nine-unit apartment complex, which used to be Lakeside Terrace. It's now Crystal Springs. Crystal Lake was our backyard. And there were, that was one of the most diverse apartment complexes in the Urbana area, anyway. So going to school and being around my peers from home, it was a natural thing. And that was in my school age years. So now, I'm just, I mean, it's more diverse now than ever, I think. And I just would like to see more staff available to be able to connect with that diversity.
Okay. All right. Ms. Yacidi? What are the top three specific issues you would address should you be appointed a board member?
If we're talking about the board in general, it would just be communication would be the top one. But if we're talking about issues, I guess it would be teacher retention, revenue shortfall, which those kind of go hand in hand. And then redistricting, strategic planning.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Diaz?
Definitely agree with the recruitment and retention of effective teachers. They're so central to the social and academic success of our young people. We have new data on the table around the dual-language program. And I think we're at a critical point in figuring out what the future is for thinking about that program for our community. And then I think mental health needs in our schools. And as I talk with teachers and with families, the post-COVID patterns that we see and the challenges and the academic loss that has happened for our families are all things that affect teachers, affect families, affect every part of what we do in the district.
Thank you. And Ms. Jones?
I would think, what I would say is teacher shortage, communication, and an updated strategic plan. I would also like to add transportation to that list because I drove the school bus. And I actually would have a full busload of kids and no monitor. So, I mean, I just wish that there was a way to keep a balance with, and it's important for the kids, too, to kind of see the same person every year, if they could. But I think that's, that was a big, big, big deal for me.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Myers?
I guess one and two, coherent strategic plan and communicating that strategic plan. I think that over the past year or so, that there have been issues that have come in front of this body. And while I think that sometimes the decisions, and I think, I think you were saying, you know, you can't make everyone happy. But I think that as far as it goes with making sure that there's a coherent strategic plan and it's communicated out effectively and in time to the community, that while you want to make everyone happy, they'll at least understand why you're going where you're going. And that last thing would be teacher recruitment and retention. Our children are our greatest resource, and the people that see them every day are our teachers. So we need to make sure that we continue to recruit amazing teachers to this area and make sure that they're in our classrooms, serving our students, serving our kids.
Thank you. Ms. Diaz? Since December 2021, there's been discussion about the Spanish dual-language program and how best to meet the needs of students, families, and teachers. Both the district committee and in the external evaluator recommended a whole-school model. What are your thoughts about moving the current strand program to a K through five Spanish school?
I think that there's recognized gaps in some of the engagement processes from the community in thinking about that whole-school model. But more importantly, the latest academic data that we have on what's happening to the students in that dual-language program. And our son, who's currently just finishing freshman year, was part of one of those first classes. And it's really distressing to see the achievement gap of youth, both who are native Spanish speakers and native English speakers in that program. So I think we have to look at that data and think about a holistic response that will address both the social needs and the academic needs of the youth and the teachers who are at the core of that program.
And Ms. Jones? What are your thoughts, I'm going to shorten the question here. What are your thoughts about moving the current strand program through, to a K-five Spanish dual-language school?
Well, I got to know many of the dual-language families in Sub District Four over the past few years, and greatly value the students. And it's my understanding that the committee and evaluation recommends a one-school district model. I just would need to study the issue more before making any decision on the location.
Okay. Mr. Myers?
So I think that what everyone else has said, making sure that we're critical users of data. While it was, we can look at a lot of the data that was given by the group last week. And one of the questions that I had while watching the school board meeting was, did the tiers of achievement actually reflect SES, social, economic status? Or were they more reflective of the instruction that was happening? What were the effects of, just being critical and being question askers when we are receiving data? As far as it goes with having one school, again, if that's where a data-driven decision process says that we should go, then that's where we should go. But we shouldn't go so fast as to not bring the community along with us.
Ms. Yacidi? Do you want me to repeat?
Yeah, one more time, that'd be great.
And this is the short version. What are your thoughts about moving the current strand program to a K-through-five Spanish dual-language school?
I am honestly not ready to give an absolute recommendation on that. I did watch the meeting last week. There was a lot of information that was, I'm going to just say heartbreaking. A lot of work to be done. There's things, like everybody was saying, we want to make a data-driven decision. So if the data does say we need to do a whole school, we will do it. But very important that we listen to our community, to see what they want, make sure we have done the other, implemented the other interventions that we could, such as a curriculum, which I guess we didn't have, before we just jumped to that. So as you really put it well, just bring the community in the decision-making process. But if the data says for sure we need a whole school, then I guess we need a whole school.
Thank you. And Ms. Jones? These are questions submitted by the public. Due to many factors, families often attend a school that is outside their attendance zone, special programs and petitions, et cetera. This is also true for board members whose school, whose students attend special programs. For example, currently, three of the present Board of Education members' children attend LEO. But those same board members represent multiple sub-districts. As a board member, how would you ensure that the student and family voices in all board sub-districts are considered in decision-making and not solely the sub-district your children attend or attended?
Right, absolutely. I think that's where the communication and getting the families together and thinking, just giving them some input on what the decisions are and just having an input on what that actually means. I think it's very important to engage the families, you know, when you are making those type of decisions. And just seeing how they feel.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Myers?
Can I have you repeat the question one more time, please?
Yes, this is a long question.
No, it is a long one.
Or just the part after the comma?
The part after the comma, the short version of it.
Yeah.
How would you ensure that, how would you, as a board member, how would you ensure that the student and family voices in all board sub-districts are considered in decision-making and not solely in the district, sub-district your children may attend?
Well, my children no longer is in Urbana Public Schools, so I don't quite have that problem. But I think as far as it goes with making sure that there's, that we are hearing voices from across the district, for parents across the district, I think that it is imperative on the board member, whichever one of us receives the post, to make sure that the lines of communication are always open, for people in our sub-region especially. But, and I know that, you know, we're sort of still recovering from the pandemic and we're not doing everything face-to-face. I attend a lot of Zoom meetings every day. It's tiring. But to actually be there, to be in the neighborhood, to sometimes be there when it is most uncomfortable to be there, making sure that we're listening, making sure that we are there to hopefully bring that voice back to our fellow board members.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Yacidi?
Can you repeat it one more time?
As a board member, how would you ensure that the student and family voices in all board sub-districts are considered in decision-making and not solely those of the sub-districts your children attend?
Availability. I, in my work life, always make myself available to all my patients. I do, I would do the same thing here. Like I said, I would make myself available every other weekend for open office hours so that anybody from any district with any problem can come and discuss openly with me any issues that they have, so.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Diaz?
One of the benefits of having lived here for so long and being on the last of six kids is that we've gotten to make friends with families from all of the elementary schools. And that has really informed my own thinking about the district and the opportunities, just to have that sharing across families about diverse experiences. I honestly am, have always been concerned about over-representation of the LEO catchment area on the board. And that's over-representation, not just on the school, but also the race profile that is usually attached with that. And so I'm delighted that there is so much turnout for the sub-district because I think it desperately needs representation that is really on the pulse of all of our youth and families.
And this is another question from the member of the public. And this is another question from the member of the public. And as far as you are aware, are there any current board members who are assigned to the same elementary school as you, as your children? Mr. Myers?
No.
No? Ms. Yazidi?
No.
Ms. Diaz?
Yes, not currently, but yes, my, yes.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Okay, and I think, I think I've covered most of my questions here. So we're going to go to closing statements. And we do closing statements in the reverse order as we do openings. So Ms. Yazidi, you go first, two minutes.
I just wanna thank you once again for putting on this forum and for this chance to possibly be on the boards. Pretty exciting to be able to do some sort of service like that. If I am on the board, I promise, once again, my major skill set is communication, actively listening, being there. My feet will be on the ground if the school's having an issue and needs talking to. I will be there and to advocate for whoever needs to be advocated for. And once again, I, even if I have a particular personal opinion on something, if the data shows that it needs to be other, otherwise, I will definitely go where the data goes. So.
Okay. And Mr. Myers?
Again, thank you for putting on the forum. Thank you for the questions, for keeping us on our toes. Thank you to the board for being a great audience. And thank you to, I guess, to my fellow people up here because I think it's been, I think that no matter who's chosen, that it will be a good choice and that there's an opportunity to bring, hopefully, with what everyone's saying here, hopefully bring, again, some coherence in the communication that happens from the board out to the community. I would be honored to serve. And I'd be excited to serve and to bring all of my passion, but my talent, dispositions, to work with my fellow board members. And I, I would, I would, yeah, be a great honor. I'd love to. And so, thank you all. Thank you, Superintendent, for having us.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Jones?
Absolutely. Thank you all for being here and sitting through this with us. I really appreciate the opportunity. And what I believe is, my dad's 30-year career with the Urbana Adult Education, my mom's leadership in bringing Head Start to Champaign County, and our family's legacy in the Urbana School District across four decades enables me to help students of all backgrounds and abilities to reach their full potential by advocating for equitable resources and closing the learning gaps. Driven to increase student and family engagement among historically marginalized families, I am dedicated to continuing my family's legacy and commitment to public education. And as a result, I have built a strong network of Urbana students and families who trust me to represent their educational needs.
Thank you. And Ms. Diaz?
Just wanna add my thanks for the forum and for the questions. And I just feel so uplifted by having been able to participate in this forum with you three as well. And it does my heart good to just again be reminded of how, how much willingness we have in Urbana to serve and pull together in support of our young people. Again, representation is very important. And I wanna just name that, again, LEO is overrepresented. And that is, you know, if we would've all known about each other and been collaborating ahead of time, I would've advocated for and still advocate for everything that brings diverse representation to this board. I told my husband, my, my, what I knew, we all as a family, we even talked to my, my freshmen about me being here tonight because I don't know how to do things halfway. I'm all in, I'm 100% committed. And that includes being available to families and stakeholders in the community. And it's gonna be a little hard, again, because our sub-district not having that neighborhood school and representing families that are going to different elementary feeders using the Urbana Library. I've been sitting here, is this space available? Just thinking about the hard work that would need to happen to make sure that Sub-District 4 is represented. I get really excited about bridging conversation across diversity. So the question earlier around how to make sure all districts are heard and considered as part of the decision-making is something that would be personally rewarding for me in this position and something I'd be honored to do.
Thank you. And the League of Women Voters thanks the Urbana School District for inviting us to participate in this public process, which is so important for, for democracy and people knowing what their, what their board members are, stand for. So thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
It was wonderful serving. It was such a pleasure. It was a great. I think I better take my water. I opened it. And I didn't use the pen, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I was deciding to even want to take this.
Yeah, I know, right?
Do you need an extra hand there?
Oh, I got it, honey, thank you so much.
So thank you all for participating tonight and applying for this position. I wanna encourage all of you, no matter what the board decides to do, this extraordinarily difficult decision, you're both, you're all eminently qualified. And I wish we could have all of you on the board, frankly. But no matter what we decide, I hope you consider running when the seat opens up in about 18 months. Applications will be accepted by the county clerk to run in Unit 4, District, Sub-District 4. So, so please look forward to that, no matter what this board decides to do. Because I really think that the voters of Sub-District 4 should have the voice. We're acting as a proxy for them tonight. That said, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of a selection of a person to fill a public office, including a vacancy in a public office, when the district is given power to appoint under law or ordinance or to discipline performance or removal of the occupant of public office, when the district is given power to remove the occupant under law or ordinance. And litigation when an action against affecting or behalf of the particular district has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal or when the district finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be reported and entered into the closed meeting minutes. Okay, all that stated is, we're going to close session to choose the, to choose who's gonna be the representative for Sub-District 4. And we're gonna talk in a separate instance about litigation that the district is facing. There will be action after the closed session. It'll be done here in this room, but will not be televised. UPTV is not gonna sit through us in the back room waiting. It will be recorded, however. So is there a second, sorry, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wrong name. Member Backsley.
Here, oh, yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum and President Kloski.
Yes. So just give us a few minutes to get organized in the back, and then we'll be calling for each of you in turn.